Okay, well, I am very excited to announce our site spelling bee chance. From Yarborough, Jathan Busek, but he's not with us tonight, he has a basketball game. And then from sixth grade academy, Matthew Marquez is here. And then from Taylor Middle School is Michaela Kirby and she, she's not here, okay. She's not here, so Matthew, you're gonna be flying solo up here, but it's okay, come over here. So each school, fifth, sixth, and seventh and eighth grade put on a spelling bee. And their winner gets to go to the Lee County Spelling Bee at Tidings Auditorium and compete against all other Lee County students. And we have three wonderful students representing Wildcat Nation. And so Matthew was our winner from sixth grade academy. And he's getting a certificate for displaying confidence as the sixth grade academy spelling bee winner. So congratulations. Do you have questions for Matthew?
Oh, with your mini word, television?
Television, okay.
Well, this reminded me of the TV. My, you know, we accidentally reached that one on all these times.
Yes.
That's important, it doesn't matter, you can't do all that without your support. So thank you very much for encouraging me on this. Will you do it again next year, Matthew?
Maybe.
That's a lot of stress, isn't it? Thank you, Matthew. Thanks very much. And I would like to say that Jathan Busek from Yarborough took sixth place out of the whole spelling bee. And Ms. Garcia, do you have anything to say or add?
I'm very proud of him, a lot of kiddos support this great, he's been doing very well.
And we did have the Lee County winner from Levington, Michaela Kirby from Taylor Middle School, won the spelling bee, so she will go on to represent us. And so Mr. Costiante, do you have anything to say?
I'm just super proud of you. So this year, we actually had our school spelling bee, we had seventy-seven kids do the spelling bee, which is the most I've ever had at Taylor. And so we, I don't remember the last time we've had a Lee County spelling bee winner. So we're super proud of her. I kept asking her, like, hey, are you studying? She's like, my dad keeps making me study. And I was like, well, hard work pays off, so I'm super proud of her.
Thank you, and if you two would give...
When is the, is it by the state or where are you?
Well, the next one is like an online, so they have to do the next step to try after the state one. And it's online on February twenty-seventh. I don't know how that works, but since we've never had a Lee County winner spell, we're gonna go on to the next step, hopefully, we'll be able to do the state spelling.
Why did I think that several years ago Addison Gannaway, did she win the spelling bee? Or I can't remember.
Sawyer won, okay.
She went to the state one.
And what did, like up in Albuquerque?
We didn't do the online deal, yeah, we went to Albuquerque and had it up there.
That's cool.
We didn't do the online deal.
That's good, so we're excited about that. So that's always a good time of the year. Also, we'd like to take a moment to recognize our board. It is school board recognition month. And this is a time to show our appreciation and to begin to understand how local board members work together to provide a better future for our Wildcats. School board members have the most important volunteer jobs in the country and often face some of the toughest challenges in elected American government. Yet, school board members are just ordinary citizens with extraordinary dedication to our nation's public schools. Therefore, January twenty-twenty-five, I would like to recognize our school board members. President Demary Maker, Vice President Patty Ann Ansel, Secretary Gail Dunlap, Member Shiloh Seeley, and Member Bradley Bishop. So thank you for your service to our district and to our students.
That's very nice, thank you.
Before we continue, I want to give a shout out, and I'm embarrassed to say I don't know her name. The little bitty tiny varsity basketball player, girls' basketball player, I don't know her name.
Peashaw.
Peashaw. I was at the boys' game and she left the concession stand right ahead of me and she got to the double doors and stopped. And I was visiting and walked up behind her and thought, this is where the Nashawn was playing. And she stopped and put her head over her heart.
Oh.
She was at the gym, she could hear it, and she stopped and put her hand over her heart.
That's good.
That's good, you guys passed that along, that people notice that kind of stuff when our kids are doing that. Thank you for sharing that, Ms. Garcia.
And we did share last month that Mrs. Maker is in the Hall of Fame, so.
You're good there. I think we're, I think we're through sharing that, so, thank you.
And one last thing, on January the twentieth, which is next Monday, we invite you to be part of our reunification PD. And Dr. Parker will be getting that information out.
Okay. All right, thank you. And you are welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, but you absolutely are welcome to leave as well. So thank you very much, appreciate you guys being here.
Congratulations.
This side of the room has to stay, this side of the room gets an option. Thank you very much, congratulations, Matthew. There you go, there you go, you missed it. It's a little late, little late. Thank you, guys. Okay, we're gonna move right on into information and the reports are in your packet. I'll open it up to questions for any of the directors' reports and/or superintendent updates.
I have a question on the Capitol project recap. And I'm waiting for mine to open here, sorry. It's, I said number thirteen, I guess there's some payment for the demo. Is that for the, what, what, what is demolition, is that going towards? Is that towards the, like, the house church over there, or it's not?
No, it was, I'm sorry, I don't have...
The P S R three.
The F C S C.
I'm sorry, it's loading, here we go. I was just looking at this deal.
Oh, at the recap, okay.
At the recap, yeah.
That is not anything to do with the demolition on Second Street.
It had asbestos inspection costs for demolition, I guess.
Okay, and maybe for the...
For the C T E deal, okay.
The Army.
I just didn't know where, how that, how that works. And then there's several items I noticed on the same spreadsheet for the laces building. I guess, is this for the new building? And does that come out of the money that we received from Capitol LA last year, I guess? Okay. There's a certain percentage that...
It didn't quite cover.
Yeah.
So some of it will be coming out of district.
Okay.
And from the money that we received for the laces, or, yes.
That's what I was gonna say, because it's, this adds up to almost two hundred thousand dollars, I think.
Yes.
We hadn't even got the building yet, I guess, so, yeah, okay. Cool, thank you.
All right, thank you, other questions? Okay, hearing none, I'm gonna move right on into the routine matters. We'll take items one through four as part of the consent agenda. Do I hear a motion to approve those items as presented?
Second. Go ahead.
Okay.
Yes.
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 Okay, next item, budget adjustments.
There are two budget adjustments for your consideration, I stand for questions. One of them is on the demolition, which that has, the project has not started yet.
Okay, that's what I was, because I saw this doing and I thought, spending some of that money, so. I didn't have a question. No, ma'am, I did not.
Questions from the board? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the budget adjustments as presented?
So move.
Get shit over.
Okay. Thank you. All right, we do not have any bids tonight. We do have some donations, you can see there for after grads, FCC LA and DECA. So questions from the board?
None from me.
The after grads, are they going to Loic again?
I think, are you, are you gonna address that during the graduation discussion?
Right, and we're, yes.
Yes, you're good, you're good. No, you, you just, you're ahead of the game here, yeah. Thank you for asking. All right, if there's no other questions, do I hear a motion to approve the donations as presented?
Second.
Okay.
Mine still hasn't popped up.
There's, it can only do so many in a day. Okay, did you get all of them, Vanessa, thank you. Okay, moving into new business, first item, consider approval of the district's safety plan, which aligns with policy E five oh five. I'll turn it over to the superintendent.
You will find in your packet, this is a plan filed, it's in the superintendent's office. This is basically detailed risk assessments within the district and establishes plans and procedures in case of an emergency event. It is a very detailed plan. And if you want to come in and check that out, page for page, I have it available for you. But this is, I'm just giving you an overview of what the plan details.
Like by one campus, because they're very similar.
Very much similar, yes.
With unique things going with it.
Yes.
Okay? And I think we had talked about it last meeting or the meeting before, and then...
It was in November.
November, okay. And then realized that we actually needed to have on the books that the board did approve that safety plan. So, yeah, always anybody can go in and look at it in Pam's office. Okay, do I hear a motion to accept the safety plan as presented by the superintendent?
Second.
Is this open?
Okay, thank you. Next item, consider approval of amended graduation date. Turn it over to the superintendent.
Yes, ma'am. Due to the construction at the event center, which we are very excited for Lee County to have this happening, but at the same time, it has affected our graduation date and have a graduation there for the next two years. Just for this year, for May twenty-twenty-five, I proposed three dates to our senior parents, put out a poll, and we received over seventy-nine percent in responses. And the winning date was Sunday, May eighteenth, at six o'clock PM. At Wildcat Stadium. So that is the date that I am proposing.
Okay, so it will be the same date that currently is scheduled just six o'clock?
Yes.
Six o'clock at the stadium, okay.
Do we have a contingency plan at all for any kind of weather?
I guess we'll just keep pushing it back.
It'd be seven o'clock.
Eight o'clock, could be midnight, but that is the plan. Because there is school on Monday, you know, so that's the plan, six o'clock under Wildcat lights.
Did you want to also address the aftergrads?
So I will get with our high school administration to plan that. We are leaning towards staying in town and doing something here with the kiddos here. We appreciate the donations that our local businesses contribute to aftergrads. And with this being so late, six o'clock that night, it would just make more sense to do something for our kids. So we are going to do something for our seniors. And there will still be the door prizes and all those things. But I will get with Mr. Williams and Ms. Hutchins and the rest of the staff to plan and finalize that. So the main thing was to get the date and the time and the location out to our parents so they can plan accordingly, so.
I will say the, the survey that went out, you could vote as many times as you wanted to. I didn't realize that until, so may just be something to think about when next surveys go out.
Maybe so.
There were five people that voted two hundred and thirty times, so, okay.
And we have trained our parents to get on there to, whenever we're sending stuff out, to get, you know, to be aware when we're sending stuff through Parents Square. And that's for all communications, so.
I think it's good to do.
It was sent to every senior parent, so.
Okay.
And a total of possible three hundred seniors to graduate from New Hope and Levington High School this year.
Two, there were seven responses.
Okay, questions from the board? And that's the date and time you recommend?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, do I hear a motion to approve the change of graduation to Wildcat Stadium at six o'clock on... May eighteenth.
So...
Okay. Yours still hasn't opened.
Mine opened, honey.
Oh. Okay, thank you. Next item, consider approval for contract services for tech support.
So, and right now, we're just asking the board for some, for permission to allow the director of technology to reach out for contract services so that we can continue providing for our kiddos in the district technology-wise.
Okay, questions from the board? Hearing none, do I hear a motion to approve that?
Someone.
Second.
Is it open?
Okay, next item, discussion and possible action to hire an additional auditor.
Asking permission from the board to, to allow us to hire an additional auditor to look at some of our processes within the district. And just asking for your blessing to do so.
When you say processes, do you have a specific area that you're wanting to look at? I know earlier we talked about procurement, or is it a variety of...
It's gonna be a variety of, of areas.
Okay.
So are we looking at hiring more people or hiring them to come in more often?
It would be a one-time, it would be one auditor, auditing company to come in and do the audit.
A one-time?
Yes, it's a one-time, it's not to replace the current auditors that we have.
Yeah, because we have a contract with him for two, three more years.
Yes.
This would be a, an additional, if, if that is something that you feel that needs to...
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
And it would be a little bit more in-depth.
Okay.
Do you know a cost, or do you have that?
We can't go over sixty thousand without doing...
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Others just not...
We just need to look into some things and just make sure. I have total faith in my people, I just need, we just need to go in and look, make sure that we're doing everything that we need to be doing as a district.
And at this point, this is the approval from the board. If you decide you want to go that direction, then you've got the approval. So it's, at this point, it's a possible action. Okay.
Right.
Okay. Other questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to allow the superintendent the flexibility to look at hiring an additional auditor if needed?
Someone, second.
Okay. Okay, thank you, moving right along. Consider approval to reschedule February twenty-twenty-five board meeting. Oh, okay, so, it appears that the five o'clock time and so far the Monday seems to be really popular. And, and so you'll notice that the next item is to adjust that policy, but of course, that takes two readings. So we would need to have a motion on the books for next month because it wouldn't take effect till then. So they would move it to Monday, the tenth?
Is that right?
No.
Okay. Yeah, it would stay the second Monday and then the...
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Thoughts from the board?
No, I think if you're, we're gonna try it, we need to try it more than one time.
Yeah, yeah.
I like it.
Okay. And your people?
My people love the five o'clock option. And you know, it really gives us the opportunity. We have athletic director and we have high school principals here and junior high principals to get to the kids' events as well, if we could meet earlier, and then it just helps everybody.
Well, and I think this is something the board's been talking about for a little while. And I mean, this transfers right into the next item as well. But Tuesdays really make it difficult for board members and personnel to support our kids.
That's correct.
And so by really looking at adjusting this, I think, I think it's a good move. I think it's, you know, we always talk about putting our kids first, and I think it is a good move.
And if it's possible for the board to be here at five, it's really truly a good time.
Okay.
It gets our directors back from being on campuses and back in time, and then they can have the meeting and then go where they need to go afterwards, so.
Okay, so do I hear a motion to approve next month's meeting for February the tenth at five o'clock? Okay?
Is it open?
Okay, thank you. And that leads us right into the next one, first reading to consider the adjustment to policy B fourteen-hundred. And you'll notice it's just that item that's highlighted where it says the second Tuesday of each calendar month is designated as the regular board meeting, and that would change to the second Monday of each calendar month, so. Any questions? Okay, do I hear a motion to approve some?
That's just a reading, right?
Mm-hmm, first read, oh, sorry. Ooh, look at y'all, y'all are on your brain. Whoa, couldn't even slide it in. Wow, okay, this five o'clock, everybody's a little more awake. Okay, so moving right on, that's all of the new business. Moving into other information, I sent you all a reminder, please let Vanessa know by next Monday a definite yes or no about the legislative convention because that cost has gone up considerably, so. And then also just a heads up on the annual conference in Atlanta, if you're interested in going to that.
Have all the costs gone up? Indecently, or is it just this one for some?
That one went way up. The, the hotel, they always give you pretty good room rates, but the hotels, you're, you are locked into using only their caterers, only their... And so renting the rooms for the meetings, et cetera, et cetera, that's where they really, that's where they make their money, you know? And I know that a lot of times, that's why we have things at the embassy is because they do the best deal. But in Santa Fe, and it's prime time, they can charge anything they want, you know? With the session going on, so, yeah. Yeah, yeah. So that's true. So anyway, if you're going to go, please let Vanessa know so that she can make those arrangements. Okay, public comment time, I don't see anybody here for public comment.
This room is so heavy.
It is, it's tilting, it's tilting. Any other items from the board? Okay.
It's going back to something we already voted on, but on the tech support services, what do you have to contract stuff up here before they sign up? I think it's something we proceed before.
For contracts, just to contract someone out, we would not. If it's an RFP, that would go through that whole process. This, correct me if I'm wrong, my understanding is this is to do a short-term contract while they look at, do we need to put out an RFP for tech support, et cetera, et cetera? But, yeah, but this would just be on a as-needed contract basis, is that correct? Okay. No, you're fine, absolutely. Anything else? Okay, if not, do I hear a motion to adjourn? Okay, five twenty-six.